Yeah, that should well be well. And when there is a problem, but at least.
I saw all that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to bring in County Worth Commission's meeting. It's April twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two. We begin with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone comes meeting the order with roll call. Mr. Saracini.
Here.
Mrs. Marsette.
Here.
Mrs. Cummins.
Here.
Mr. McMenamin.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. McCray.
Here.
Mr. Rorler.
Here.
Mrs. Malasaka.
Here.
Mr. Bedali.
Here.
Everyone's here. Mr. President. Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to have a recognize a passing of a longtime township resident, police scout leader Fred Sash. I mean Fred used to come up here a lot, a lot, a lot over the years. He had since like just retired and moved out to uh to where is it? Just one of the Adrian Street, Adrian Street homes, but Fred served as scout master with the Women's Troop Forty-three for sixty years. Sixty years. The Noddy Cabin in Millheim frequently found behind the movie cameras as a really football videographer for over fifty years. For his service to really football. It was, it was the first non-athlete to ever receive the Edward F. and William J. Burke Memorial Award as Sportsman of the Year in two thousand and four. So, Fred's family or condolences go out to it and they don't make finer men than this, you know. Sixty years being a scout master, that's something else. If we could have him on the side, I'll just remember Fred. Thank you. Real nice guy. He was a real good athlete. Okay. Public forum. John Chaffey.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. First, the manhole issue with on the date. Krueger's office said back in February they wanted to take care of that Pico. Is that?
Pen dot.
Wow.
Well, it's Pen dot street.
Yeah. They've been doing the other side, okay? In front of Catania's building months ago. Just to go hardies and stuff to the contractor for error. So, I knew that he had said it's gas, electric, Pico. It's their jurisdiction.
Alright.
So, our side is the bad part, you know, my street there on our side, the big bumper, you know. It's a manhole. You got one My Hunters Auto tag. You got one across the street from Catania there. And talking to them, they're not going to address that side. Address it. What's the deal, you know?
So, is it a state highway?
I just spoke with you. It's not, it's, they're, they're, they do the work. And the Pico guy, electric guy told me Farrar and Farrar's doing the work.
Let me, Charles, correct me if I'm wrong. If Pen, if Pen dot fixes the man, they will fix the manhole on state highway. Or they would have them fixed.
Pen dot would direct the utility to fix the manhole. We had no jurisdiction on the debt.
You would think that, sure.
Well, I know that.
Farrar's doing it.
We have no jurisdiction over Pen dot. We don't. Well, I protect your state. They call state representative, state. Pen dot's a state. I'm not throwing, I'm not saying she's wrong, but I think she had more.
I don't know even now. Maybe on the Pico list, I mean, the manhole, they must say Pico.
Well, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter what it is, it's where it is, you know what I mean?
I, I would, we were a hundred percent, but that's what I'm being told. You're telling me something, you're telling me something.
Oh, I thought you said you agree with me one hundred percent.
That's not what you're saying.
I was gonna mark it down in a minute. Then you agreed with me. But whoa. Hey, wait. I always have to reach out to our officer in relation. It's definitely a Pen dot issue.
All of the Kruegers and I haven't gotten response back. I hear there's different scenarios going to happen up there. We were moving up different people or. Just one of them.
We, we, we try not to, you know, interfere with other people's business that, but we can, you know, send a request on your behalf. Say, hey, we have a place in the Pen dot. She's always been responsive, so.
It's terrible and it's an obstacle for us.
Yeah.
You know, I liked that for a while. So, what about, um, we had, oh, it's on our trash truck. Who used to say keep Ridley Towns clean, remember? That slogan?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're getting away from that. We, we, but I got a lot of catching up to do. Take for instance, the apartments there by Blue Ridge, by Greenmore Plaza. Who owns that cliff there? I'm backing.
I think it's Pen dot too, bro.
Bought it, yeah, bought it at Pen dot right away.
Anyway, they did some cutting there just recently with the curry kicker and all that. But they needed debris there. There's been debris there previously. And it looks like heck and it's dangerous. It's a sidewalk counter, you know. It was rolled down.
That was Pen dot that did the cutting.
Alright, so it's, it's like heck. Plus the trash on the blue roof and all that.
All street.
All that. Alright, how about let's talk about the old Amoco station on Chester Pike, Aaron Crumway. Uh, it's horrible looking, you know, the woods like.
Base transmission?
Yeah.
There's a tire spur coming in there. They must be zoning. They're gonna fix it up. They're gonna.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
It's a new owner.
New owner of property.
I'm gonna see, I hate the bad, uh, the old Eddie's Market, Canada Rees. That guy.
They're jumping around.
Well, you know.
Alright.
That's close to home.
Like a, like a test, like I get the geography tested. The old Eddie's, yes.
That's close to home.
Eddie's Winter Rice.
That guy, yeah. I knew the guy. Uh, the crack one, the old ply went on there. He's got loose trash outside his door. Come on, you know. You know. Regardless. Could do something, you know.
It's bad. We will do something about it.
Yeah, the windows cracked. Yeah, whole plywood looks kind of like, you know.
I encourage always someone you didn't came up, what kind of plywood, if it's covered and secure, about what we can do about it.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate for them.
Alright, here comes the best. One oh seven Millheim, you got a commercial vehicle, a truck. Uh, he's a, he's employed by a contractor. Got all your literature here on your articles and violation. Uh, I talked to Joe some years, two weeks ago, I mentioned it all. And, uh, no, we have said sadly, sadly enough, Joe, uh, we were having a conversation on the phone and he didn't give me an explanation. He hung up on me. I think that's very unprofessional, Joe. This conduct. You should be a better person than that.
John, I'm not gonna put up somebody screaming at me.
No, I wasn't screaming at you. I mentioned something. I just saw the truck heading to his house and you clicked the phone.
What time of night was that?
Two weeks, one of Wednesday.
Where it was like.
Two weeks ago.
What time was that?
And he, about six o'clock. He said he's at his house, yeah. Yeah, he didn't want, didn't give me a chance, give me an explanation of why. Because we're not gonna do nothing about it. You better explain yourself right now.
He doesn't need to explain himself.
Well, give me an answer.
Hey, it's after, after work and I think he didn't answer it. You're not gonna yell at anybody to township. You know, you're not gonna get anybody on the phone and harass them like you've done with code department, like you've done with many departments here.
What's this damn, it's legal. You're trying to tell me it's legal from the park that he's driving?
Nobody's saying it's legal. I didn't say it was legal.
What?
I didn't say it was legal.
Well, that's the thing.
Our township manager's not gonna run out at six o'clock at night because you called.
I didn't ask him to. Alright, have your code people during the day and I had Jimmy Dogby was gonna have a police car investigated on the weekday.
They look around, they see them and they, or they don't see them. If you see them. Or if we, if we catch them, we will cite them.
It's right over there right now.
But, okay. Is that by your house?
No, because you know what happened in sixteen? You harassed me about a fire truck, that's what.
Ah.
So, you know, paybacks.
We didn't harass you. Your neighbors.
No, 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 no. Don't go that way.
You go there.
Don't go there.
I'll go there.
No, you're not.
I am, I am.
No, the bar over, girl at the bar, at the T bar. I had it go straight about. No, it didn't.
When neighbors call.
I have no neighbors like that.
When neighbors call and complain about something, we have to react. You're not gonna run around.
No, 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 no.
And pick out things.
Don't try to, don't try to put words in my mouth.
You have to let him speak. You don't want to take one person that is.
We're not gonna argue about it.
No, we're not gonna argue. That, it's the first I've ever heard that from you. First ever about the neighbors complained about my fire truck.
Oh my God, John.
No.
We talked about the fire truck years ago when I said, John, I can't do anything about it. Everybody's complaining about it.
It was your two stooges, code enforcement.
Our stooges.
Those two, yeah. I had a personal vendetta. I had a personal vendetta against me. That's why.
John, let's end the conversation now.
That's it.
And we will work on your issues.
That's it.
Okay.
That's it. And you keep trying to make a fool out of me, I'm gonna sue you.
Sue us. I'm not taking a fool.
Yeah, because I'm bolder than you and smarter than you. And you're not, you're not gonna, you're not gonna change it around. Flip it to your advantage, advantage. Good job. Did you get fired from county?
No, we did not.
Yes, you did. He told me himself. He won't admit it though.
Oh, man. Yeah, I did get fired.
Yeah, right. Try to do your job right.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
John, I think we had enough.
You lost cause, Joe. You're a fraud totally.
Thank you.
All these.
Okay, John, everybody's nice.
Think I'm stupid or something.
Okay. On brighter note. It's unfortunate. Okay. Anybody else for a public forum to follow that? Thank you. Approval of previous meeting minutes, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made second. Any questions on the motion? Alors in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, managers report. Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, President. Uh, first thing is a motion being ordered to ratify the sale of a twenty-eleven Jeep Grand Char, Grand Cherokee through the municipal bid auction in the amount of eight thousand two hundred dollars. This is another vehicle that we had as a surplus that, uh, we've been very successful putting these vehicles on municipal and, uh, this one we got eight thousand two hundred dollars worth. So, I need a motion to ratify the sale.
I'll make a motion to ratify.
One second.
Motion made second. Any question on the motion? Alors in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next item is a motion being ordered to ratify the Ridley Township Police and FOP Lodge Twenty-seven contract. After negotiations with the FOP, uh, township has reached a three-year, uh, contract agreement beginning with twenty twenty-two. The contract calls for wage increase of four percent for the first year and then two percent in the second and third year. The contract also provides for an act forty-four retirement program, commonly known as drop, with a maximum thirty-six month participation for eligible officers who are at least age fifty-two and have completed twenty-seven years of service with the Ridley Township. I would need a, uh, motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made second. Any questions on the motion? Alors in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Now, the next two items is that we received two requests from Notre Dame of the Lords. The first is for their food truck festival on Friday, May twentieth from five to ten PM on the school grounds. And the second is for their annual carnival to be held October thirteenth through the fifteenth from six to ten PM nightly, also on school grounds. The required paperwork for these events has been received. A motion, uh, to approve both requests would be ordered.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made second. Any questions on the motion? Alors in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next thing I have on the list is, uh, Grover, we've spent a lot of time with the commissioners and engineer coming up with, uh, spending of our ARPA funds. Uh, what we've done this past month has come up with, um, the funding that we're gonna use to, uh, supplement and fully fund, uh, projects, both with, uh, our storm, our stormwater quality project known as the MS four pollution reduction plan, our storm drainage projects and our sanitary sewer projects. Before I get into them, I was just gonna have Ms. Catania explain a little bit about the MS four, so people who are not familiar with that, uh, can better understand what that is.
MS four is a government acronym. Government loves you acronym. So, MS four is municipal separate storm sewer systems. Back maybe, uh, say twelve years, over ten years ago, the federal government decided that, that each municipality will be responsible for monitoring, uh, the, the stormwater runoff that leaves the, the township and issued permits to each of the, each of the towns in order to accomplish that. The township has a permit and we're actually in the third permit cycle. The other, the previous permits were, were very simple. We just had to do public education, asking people not to, you know, dump more oil in storm drains and, you know.
Get his little sticker thing.
Yeah, little sticker to put on the drains and that was it. The, the most recent permit cycle took this to a whole new level where now the township is required, was required to develop a pollution reduction plan and implement construction projects in order to reduce the amount of pollutant that was entering the streams. In, in, in this case, in the current permit, the pollutant of concern is sediment. It's not necessarily mean that, you know, road grit and that kind of stuff washing into the storm sewer system as part of it, but it's kind of the volume of the water that's being discharged from the town is affecting the stream banks and that's creating, you know, causing erosion of the stream banks and it's creating a sediment load on, on the streams and the rivers. So, the permit requires us to remove ten percent of our estimated sediment load. So, they gave us some protocol in order to calculate how much sediment was leaving Ridley Township and we require to reduce ten percent of that. Under the pollution reduction plan that was done, we identified a number of projects in order to, to meet that goal. We're obligated to meet that goal within five years of the permit issuance. I think we have like twenty twenty-six in that timeframe to be able to do these projects.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Catania.
But these are things that we have to do from the federal government.
It, it's, I, I hear this term on funded made, here's another one where, and this is not, this is not little money. This is, you know, we're talking millions of dollars that need to get spent in order to address the, meet the requirements of the permit.
Great. Thank you.
So, after, uh, much consideration and, uh, looking at the different projects that needed to be done, we have allotted approximately two million dollars of our ARPA funds to these type of projects. The, uh, first we spent, we're allowing about a half a million to address some MS four issues and they will be at the, uh, Noel Field Drainage for the bioswale construction. Morris Grant Garfield Avenue for bio retention and rain garden. Black Rock Park, East and West Side, uh, for bioswale construction. Schoolside Lane for a bio retention and rain garden. Ridley Municipal Park Phase Two of the infiltration bed. Um, Ridley Municipal Park Bio Retention and Rain Garden. Ridley Mill Lane for a Bio Retention and Rain Garden. Amos Land and Sixth Avenue for an infiltration bed. And Stony Creek and Agnes, uh, string bank restoration. So, as I said, we're using ARPA money for some of these projects. We'll fund it all other ones. We'll use other funds along with ARPA to come up with the funding we need for these projects. As far as storm drainage projects. Swatborne University Storm Sewer Replacement. Sycamore Avenue, four hundred block for rear yard drainage. Eleven hundred block of Mule and Bird for a color replacement. Ninth Avenue, the hundred block for rear yard drainage. C Kane Road, twenty-four hundred block for a relief pipe. Arlington and Haverford for storm sewer replacement. The nine hundred block of Kelly and Catherine for rear yard drainage. Five hundred block of Mitchell and Lindsay for rear yard drainage. Four hundred block of Hutchinson Terrace for street drainage. Circle Terrace and Oakleaf Knoll for your rear yard drainage. Seventh Avenue in the area of Grace Park area for street drainage. Renona Avenue, the two hundred block for storm sewer replacement. And the, uh, following streets are all getting storm sewer, uh, extensions. That will be, um, four hundred block of Mitch, uh, Michelle, eight hundred block of Wyndham Terrace, twenty-two hundred block of Franklin, four hundred block of Cedar, six hundred block of Wendy, twenty-one hundred block of Armstrong, six hundred block of Stainbridge, two hundred block of Folsom, two hundred block of Fernwood, four hundred block of Sylvania, four hundred block of Sycamore and Evergreen. Um, Fifth Avenue and Hazel, Fifth and Edgewood. Uh, in the lead-in school area, we're doing a stormwater basin. Darby Road, the three and four hundred block is storm sewer replacement. The two hundred block of University, storm sewer extension. Two hundred block of Morris and fifteen hundred block of Shavello for storm sewer extension. We're using, uh, a million dollars of the ARPA money to help fund or totally do some of those projects. Uh, lastly, for the sanitary sewer projects, we've allotted about five hundred thousand for the nineteen hundred block of Hague. The two hundred block of Morris, the one hundred block of Bridge, the eight hundred block of Quince, twenty-one hundred block of Armstrong and the nine hundred block of Greenhouse Drive to do sanitary sewer replacement or relight.
Yeah, I want to thank Joe. Thank you. And thank Charles, the engineer and, you know. We didn't have a lot of money, but I mean, what we tried to do was get the votes back to the buck and the engineer did a great job seeing how many people would be affected by each project and that fact of what we would use money on. I'm sure there's people out there that aren't on the list, but we will get to it. We just try to go with the engineer's advice and say, hey, this is, this project here will affect eight homes. So, the whole idea with the ARPA money was to help the people. So, we're trying to help as many people as we can with these projects. I think, uh, all the commissioners reviewed it and I think you guys did a great job between the MS four that we have to do, the stormwater that is definitely helpful and the sewer projects that we have to do. We're still gonna be meeting, uh, we still have another part, another phase of this, which is gonna be the fire companies, the youth clubs. Um, who else you might have forgotten?
A PTO.
Other PTOs, uh, other, other community groups. So, uh, we still have that that we're, we're working on now. So, uh, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion. One second.
Motion's made second. Any questions on the motion? Alors in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, I have one more item. Not that I think we need to address it or not, but, uh, I think, uh, public forum that came up about, uh, Mr. Ryan being fired, which is, uh, not a total accuracy. Uh, that was strictly due to a political, uh, change in the county and, um, just like everywhere else, when parties change, they bring in their people that they're comfortable with. Uh, Joe has no, uh, re, you know, no regrets there. He, he had a long, uh, great career at the county. Uh, did very great, very good job there and we're happy to, you know, we were able to land him, you know. So, it was, uh, their loss and our gain and Joe, uh, you know, doing a perfect job and some people just not gonna be happy all the time.
He was a free agent, as they say.
You were a free agent and we got you, but there was, you had, you had a distinguished career at the county and we're all proud of you for that. We want to thank you for your use of services, top cop in the county. So, nobody ever knock you down on that.
Exactly.
About that fire truck. Sorry. I can't resist sometimes. Uh, recycling report, Mr. Bedali.
The second one.
Shining too.
Thank you, Mr. President. Trash collected in March was 1,187.61 tons. Recycling collected in March was 202.03 tons. We collected 23 TVs and monitors in March through our television monitor recycling program. More information on this program is available on the township website at www.ridleytownship.org.
Thank you. Control room report, Captain Canine, emergency report, Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was a tax assessment appeal for 2021 filed by the taxpayer, 500 West Sellers Avenue in Hampshire, following our 3801-0044701, which resulted in a negotiated settlement, which reduced the assessed value that was placed by the county in 2021 at $1,290,540 to $787,500. Our appraiser came in at $940,000, and the taxpayers came in at $635,000. This results in a tax reduction in the township of approximately $2,748. So I would need, and also the release order of school directors approve this on April 4, 2022. I would need a motion for the approval. They suddenly didn't authorize for me to sign a stipulation that fixes the assessed value for 2021 and 2022 at $787,500.
I'll second. Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else? Thank you. Engineers report, Mr. Catania.
Thanks, Mr. President. Having certificates for approval, recommend approval of the following. Radiator Communication Service, the 2022 Police Radiator, made its contract $3,229.01. ADU Service Incorporated, the 2022 Storm and Sanitary Sewer Contract, $21,943.55. And Abenizio Construction for the Pennvest Storm Improvement, $325,538.88. And Abenizio Construction for the Greenhouse Drive Sanitary Sewer, $92,873.90. With Mobile Dredging and Video Play Incorporated, the Braxton Road Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project for Change Order Number One. We're Friday Inc. for the Knoll Field Improvement Site Work, $43,380. We have traffic planning design for the Kedron and Franklin Avenue Traffic Signal, Traffic planning design for the Greenlight Go Grant, $2,046,062. And McMahon Associates for the Arlie Grant, $487.50.
I'll make a motion to approve the certificates as we're.
I'll second.
First made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have two escrow approvals for consideration. The Leonard Builders at 317 Gorsuch Street, $15,796. And Tim Broom on Adam Street, $79,557.66.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have stipulations to bid. Last month, we opened bids for the Mullenburg Avenue culvert replacement. We received three bids. The low bid was a little over $93,000, with the base bid. With the alternate, it was over $100,000. This is over our budget estimate, so we're going to ask that the board reject these bids and authorize re-advertising, or review the scope of that project, put it out for bid again.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We opened bids for the 2022 Street Resurfacing Program. There were four bids received, and we're going to recommend award to the low bid was Glasgow Inc. at their base bid amount of $758,538, plus an alternate of $76,157.50 with concurrence from Darby, Councilman, and Mullenburg. This is a shared street for those towns.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Authorization to advertise for the Ninth Avenue Drainage Improvement Project, just looking for approval to put that project out for bid.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have the Delcor Public Meeting, they are, they reference to the tunnel project, just real briefly, that Delcor is going to hold an informational meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock in this building, in this room, to discuss this project. It's, it's an overall sanitary sewer improvement project for the entire region, and it's basically transferring how our sewage is being treated. So if anybody's interested, they show up tomorrow night and get all the details that they might want. And then finally, the Pennvest project status, this project we're finally getting towards the end. Six, Sixth and Stainbridge is under construction currently. Armstrong and Wendy Road, the final two projects have been slightly delayed due to ongoing supply issues. We expect those to be started towards the middle to end of May, and they, we've had some issues with restoration, and the contractor, I had his restoration subcontract come back, he's in town now, so we hope to have all those addressed shortly, and that's all I have.
I'm at Delcor Public Meeting, I think I already stressed that the project is not, is going along 291 area of the township, it's not coming through town or anything.
Yeah, yeah, right.
It's not in effect, the residents.
It's, it's a tunnel, it's underground, we won't even know what's going on.
Highway Sanitation Committee Report, Mr. Craig.
Yes, I only have one thing tonight, I just wanted to remind the residents that there will be no trash collection on Tuesday, May 17th. That's a primary election day. That's all I have.
Thank you. All those in favor, report, Mr. McDouly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to defer to Mr. Neal, solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. McDouly.
Thank you.
Mr. President, on the agenda tonight, we have an intent to adopt the medical marijuana facilities ordinance, and what's precipitating this is under the Pennsylvania Medical Marijuana Act. It's mandated that you need to, you know, establish, you know, medical marijuana facilities in the municipality, however they can be regulated. And again, met with the zoning officer in this matter, and he would have a scheduled public hearing concerning this matter in May to deal with this, so again, that would be the plan at this point.
What they're saying is you have to allow a place for it in every township, like same thing with like tattoos and other things, you can't just say you can't have it, but you can't have a zone for it, and I think that's what the public meeting is for, to say, hey, we're going to zone it in this certain zone.
And there's certain conditions you can place.
Conditions, yeah. Exactly. Look on the website, and there will be advertising for the meeting. I believe it's going to be probably the 30th Thursday in the next month. I don't know what date that is, you remember calendar?
Yeah, it's May 19th.
It's May 19th. Looks like it should be May 19th at 6 o'clock, right here. Okay.
And then also, there's.
Wait, we need to make a motion or can't do that? Make a motion? Make a motion, second.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Negative resolution to amend the non-residential electrical permit fees. Currently, the fees are $55 per 1,000 for the first $250,000 of cost. Under the proposed resolution, that would be increases $60 per $1,000 for the first $250,000 of cost. So we need a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Yes. I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Recreation Committee Report, Mr. McManus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Registration is now open for our summer programs. There's a list of the various programs out on the online registration link available on our website, www.ridleytwp.org, under Parks and Recreation. Four of the five playgrounds camps locations are filled to capacity, however, there's still openings that are within elementary school location, so please go out and sign up if you're looking. We are happy to announce that we have received a generous grant of $5,000 from the PICO Green Region Open Space Program for our South Swatmore Avenue Shade Tree Project. Everybody likes a little shade. We are very grateful for PICO funding contributions to our project. The planting of trees will commence in the fall of 2022. Thank you to PICO for the generosity and continued support of our efforts to improve our parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee Report, for the month of March, our police handled 1,030 calls. The service is broken down as follows, Crumlin 82, Folsom 287, Holmes 99, Melon Park 54, Wharton 50, Rindy Park 104, Sea King 69, Swatmore 49, and Woodland 236. Another busy month. It's like we're always right around 1,000, 1,000 calls. You guys spin the wheel, Jim, Captain, I think we come up with a dumb number. As a very busy, you do a great job. Couple highlights for the month of April. April 10th, Officer Wright was on routine patrol in the area 1300 Block of West McDay, when he stopped the vehicle for expired registration. The operator was found to be suspended and had an active county benchmark. Searching to the rest, Officer Wright confiscated numerous controlled substances, including methamphetamines, crack cocaine, marijuana, prescription pills. Nice job by one of our newer officers. April 10th, police received numerous calls for gunshots in Crumlin Section. Responding officers Sergeant McDevitt and Officer Callahan were able to make several arrests in connection with the shooting. Contraband and a stolen gun were taken from the street as a result. April 19th, Officer Maranic was dispatched to one of our hotels for a change in mental status. On extensive investigation, it was believed the subject was spiriting a mental breakdown, perhaps exacerbated by drug use. Due to Officer Maranic's time, effort, and persistence, he was able to get the subject to seek help. Subsequently, a handgun, shotgun, and ammunition, and a machete were seized from his room. I usually just pack them in a shorts. Three days later, someone was stopped in the Cleveland Airport accompanying the drop of security lines, scary stuff. Police Department received several, received letters of gratitude about two officers who went above and beyond call of duty. On April 8th, Officer Spence assisted a motorist who was broken down during the rush hour at a busy intersection at Kedron and McDay. The officer was not only appreciative of Officer Spence's quick response in assisting in removing the vehicle, but for his compassion and easing his anxiety during this time. Spence assisted an elderly resident in our Sea King section, I'm sorry, Sergeant, on April 9th, Sergeant McDevitt and Officer Spence assisted an elderly resident in our Sea King section. She was disoriented and had parked a half a block from her home. Vehicle was turned to her house, and the officers carried the person inside. Family members were contacted. So I tell you, you hear that a lot about our officers, you hear them a number of times on how compassionate they are, and how they handle situations, and make sure that people feel at ease no matter where they're at, so that's a great job.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks to all everybody.
Yeah.
Very proud. Health care department, with the search team.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of March, we had 241 permits issued, 42 contractors registered, 64 certificates of occupancy issued, 346 rental inspections, and 16 health inspections. That's all.
Thank you. Running Command Report, Mr. Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two, two items on the docket tonight. First one is the land development application of RJ Sunreality LLC to redevelop 2603 to 26, 23 McDay Boulevard, with the Chipotle restaurant and an urgent care facility is before us tonight. Our township engineer reviewed, we reviewed the plan, along with Commissioner McDouly, and I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, subject to the engineer's comments, along with the conditions that the development provide for an enter-only signage on Brighton Terrace and left-turn exit only on Highland Terrace. Make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. It's going to be a great project.
Yeah. Second item, we received a subdivision application from Stall Marriage Bridal Saloon at 2339 East McDay Boulevard, Holmes, to subdivide one parcel into two. No land development is proposed with this project. Like to make a motion to approve the application, subject to the alternate township engineer's comments.
Good. Good here. I think that's a salon on those.
Motion, second. Who made the motion?
I mean, I can't.
I made the motion. That's a real move, second.
I'll second.
Mr. McDouly, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Reddick?
That is it, I'm sorry.
Okay, Library Resource Center Committee Report, Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Delco Library Noble App was launched earlier this month, putting access to the library at your fingertips. Simply visit the App Store on your mobile device and search Delaware County Libraries. Once you download the app, the device becomes your library card. You can search the catalog, placeholders, manage your account, access databases, and utilize the self-checkout function at select locations, including Ridley Township. Apparently, Ridley Township patrons are leading the county in self-checkouts and downloads on the Noble App. The app will tell you the distance from each library from wherever you are, and which libraries are open. Click on a library listing for full hours, social media links, and a live calendar of events. More information and video tutorials are available at www.delcolibers.org, or visit the Ridley Library, and our staff will be happy to help you. The Friends of the Library Book Sale will be held Friday, May 20th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. with a book and beverage opening night event. The sale continues Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. and the following week during library open hours. 4,769 people visited the library in March and checked out 12,688 books and other items. Program attendance was 2,483. Thank you.
It's amazing.
Brilliant.
Great job. You know, I always think about it, when we were going to expand the library, build a new library, people saying, every business library is anymore. That was the biggest pushback that we got from people. 4,000 people in one month.
Yeah.
Great job, I mean, I talk to you guys.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Great job.
Can I give a shout out to my predecessor, Kathy Biddle?
Absolutely.
She and her staff did this Noble App. They, they decided that we needed to do it, and they did a great job, and she let me know that Ridley Township is leading in a lot of category.
As always.
I think it's everything in the county. Kathy did a great job for us for years.
That's big.
She never got 4,000 people. Finance Committee Report, Marsha.
Thank you, Mr. President. All commissioners received a list of this month's bills. I'd like to make a motion to approve, subject to the controller's review.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, are any old new business? Welcome back.
Thank you.
Want, is there training? You look well-trained and educated.
I'm late tonight.
Okay. Is there TV, anything?
Nothing tonight.
Sorry.
Yes, I do one thing, just speaking of 243, you mentioned about the passing, they helped out a couple weeks ago cleaning up the creek behind Ridley High School. So they had about 17 volunteers that, looking at the pictures, had a lot of trash out of there, young men and a couple parents helping out to clean up the area, and I thought we give a shout out for 243. John Thomas and all the, all the kids and the guys helping out was just a big thing to do, so we appreciate it, all the township, everybody in the township appreciates it, and also the commissioners, so we need to pass that on.
Yeah, great, good job. Great.
Yeah, just, some of us were at the Swatmore Wood Opening Day this weekend, and it's just, again, to just put it out there, obviously, all the Little Leagues, all the youth clubs, everything's going on, very active in the neighborhoods. Slow down, stop at stop signs, please. And throw another shout out, just there's a lot of coaches and volunteers that spend an awful lot of time and effort with these organizations over the course of the summer and even throughout the course of the whole year. We got basketball, we got soccer, we got everything. So thank you, thank you from the bottom of our hearts to all these volunteers that helped the, helped the young people in Ridley Township have a successful and fun time doing what they do.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to piggyback off what Bob mentioned about ARPA. We would love to got more money, but the Joe Ryan, our engineer, all the commissioners, really took a look at this and determined the best way we could spend it to hit a lot of people in the township. And I think everybody did a great job. Just the list that he's put together on some of this stuff, it really, it's going to make a difference. And I want to thank everybody for that. I had a project over on Greenhouse Drive and it's amazing how, and it was a big project. And when you start it and the people that lived there had some questions. I got Joe involved, I got Charles involved, and it was very professional. And they are, they are so pleased on what has been done there. Very grateful.
I just wanted to say thank you to the Ridley Township Maintenance Department and the coaches and parents at Black Rock Park because the field looked beautiful. The kids were so excited. It was a great opening day. And the two little girls that, you know, that we throw a ball to the kids, they throw it to us this time. Cutest thing ever was I asked them what their favorite thing about T-ball this year, and they said water ice.
Commissioner Meneman dropped the ball though, which is.
Do you have it on tape?
Someone does. Can we get it out there? It's like our police department, it's always say thank you again for doing a great job and be safe and take good care of yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Or motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Any adjourn? Thank you, thank you.